It's four o'clock. It's a bit, we will call this special called Planning Board Meeting to order. This is a specially called planning meeting. So I'm going to ask everybody to stand and Mr. George Loach is going to do the invocation. And I'll start the Pledge of Allegiance.
I probably never think I'd be able to state blessings as given us, but thankful to be here as a board in the city in which we live in. Thank for the blessings of life and this great country in which we live. I hope for the time that's been dedicated by those that are here. Blessings that we all do things as we should for the betterment of our community. Thank you very much, God, well, amen.
Amen. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God.
Where did that come from? Do we have poltergeists in the building?
She's not, she's not in the building.
Chair, Mr. Kilbry. As a part of the special meeting since this is called, you need to read the announcement.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Ms. Thomas.
You need to read the announcement about the special call meeting into the record.
Which?
Second page of your.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I need to do that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um. You're hereby notified that a special call meeting of the planning board is hereby called to be held, but that's the letter. Is that what you want?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I got you. Okay, July 6, 2022 to the members of the planning board, George Deloach, Chase Barnes, Don Rawls, Earl Wallace, Edie Wilson, and Caitlin Owens. You're hereby notified that a special call meeting of the planning board is hereby called to be held on July the 18th at City Hall located at 201 North Second Street, Palaca, Florida, 32177. The meeting is called to commence at four o'clock. The purpose of this meeting is to make a recommendation to the City Commission on proposed zoning code changes concerning minimum square footage of newly constructed residential houses. Please govern yourself accordingly. Signed, Ed Kilbry, Board Chairman, and Lisa Walsh, Planning Director. Any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the planning board with respect to any manner considered at such meeting will be needed, will need a record, a record of the proceedings and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is based, Florida Statute 286 dash period 10 or 0105. Is that good? Okay. Yes, ma'am. Row call, please.
Chairman Kilbry.
Here.
Lord Hillow.
Here.
Earl Wallace.
Here.
Chase Barnes.
Here.
Donna Rawls.
Here.
Edie Wilson.
Here.
Caitlin Bell.
No.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go next to public comments. Speakers are limited three minutes. No actions can be taken on the items that are brought forth before the committee, before the board. Is there anybody wishes to speak? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, I'll close that and I will bring case PB 22-26 Ordinance for Minimum Living Area Requirements before the board. Ms. Walsh, would you please address this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Commissioners, members.
Members. Board members.
Planning Board members, thank you. Um, there's been, we've received a request to investigate and incorporate minimum living areas requirements into our zoning code for the various districts. Um, there are many other communities that do this. I've done some research. I utilized one community in particular because they had a really great chart to read that was easy to read and use, and that was Orange County, Florida. They had some minimum requirements in there for all units was basically 500 square feet. And then it went up from there for the various zoning districts. We have gone out into the field and done some research, myself and Sunshine. And taken some photographs for y'all to look at to give you an idea of just what a 500 square foot house looks like versus other size houses. Um, Sunshine, if you could pull up one of the, the first picture of the 515 square foot house, thank you, ma'am. That's 952 square feet. That's the foundation for one. These, these houses are all over on Veterans Way. Off of, um, is it Palm Avenue?
Mm-hmm. No, it's west over.
West over, sorry, western, thank you. Um, so that's the foundation for the 952 square foot house. It gives you an idea of, obviously, they're still in the beginning stages of construction. In the next picture, that is what a 512 square foot house looks like. That's one bedroom, one person. Usually one person, no guarantees on that, of course, but the 952 square foot house has two bedrooms in it. So then we took some photographs of other houses across the street and that house is approximately 1,100 square feet. Give you an idea of the scale and the next house down is about 1,300 square feet. So to that end, we went into the code and started going through each zoning district. And I did a little bit of housekeeping in here as well regarding something that was brought to my attention several months ago from people at the county regarding the Florida Building Code requirements. And if you'll go to the first section of the code, it's section 94-141 or section one of the ordinance.
Excuse me, Ms. Walsh.
Sir.
Do we need to go refer to this or what's in here now?
Um, either one. The second change that I made, I'll tell you right now, is that is in the downtown business district. And it was a renumbering of something in the code. There's a list of something that was lettered A, B, C. It should have been A, B, C, D. And in the code, it was C, D, C, D instead of A, B, C, D. And that was brought to my attention by kitchens. And so I wanted to make sure that we took care of that during this the seat, these proceedings. So in the first section, you'll see where I crossed out in item. There, I crossed out an item seven where it says, all construction shall be can on continuous perimeter port concrete footers measuring a minimum of 24 inches wide by eight inches deep. The county has told, the county building official has told me that the building code doesn't recognize that. That's actually a different standard in the building code. And since we were referencing the building code, we're just going to take it out, even though we want all of our new construction to be on a continuous poured perimeter foundation. And then item eight is what I added for a minimum living area for dwelling, dwelling units of 1,200 square feet. That was also taken from that chart from Orange County and the other places that I've looked at. These numbers can change to your, according to your wishes, if you so desire, if you have other suggestions or other experience that you want to make, but I wanted to give you those photographs as an example of the size of the square feet that have been indicated. Okay? Basically, in the next session, section, it's the same change, section two, section three. Has the same change, minimum square feet of 1,200. Section four is our two family, uh, two family residential district for the Palaca Municipal Code. And in there, I added, um, the minimum living area, which I'm sorry is not underlined, should be underlined. Specifically for single family dwelling units is 1,200 square feet. And if it's multifamily, then it would be 500 square feet. The other thing that I added to each of these sections is a reference to a Senate section, I'm sorry, a sentence at the beginning that says, he also appendix C. Appendix C is something that I added at the end. It's a chart of all of these development standards for each zoning district. And we'll get to that at the end. Section five, same thing, appendix C. Removing the footer dimension and adding minimum living area, 1,200 square feet for single family, 500 for multifamily. Our four. In section six, that one's pretty extensive, but I also took out the dimensions of the footer and added minimum living area for dwelling units of 850 square feet. Is that underlined in your copy, Sunshine? It's not. Okay, that's interesting.
Line 27.
Page six, line 27 should be underlined as a change.
Was, well, would you go to the number here, Mr. Barnes?
You're, you're in the wrong one. Yep.
Oh, okay.
We're in six now. Section six, subsection nine. Correct. Subsection nine is a suggested addition.
Okay, you said that was on six?
Page six.
We're missing the bottom. We're missing a larger print. If you go to section six. You got a seven, line seven, not like that. You come down to 27. This is the most. As a suggestive change.
Okay, all right. So that's section six. Section seven has the same, see also appendix C. And item F, and then items, item seven, took out the measurement for the footer and added item eight, minimum living area for dwelling units is 500 square feet. Section eight. Item F, see also appendix C. Remove the measurement from item seven, added item eight, minimum living area, 500 square feet. Section nine, same thing. Are you with me, Mr. Wallace?
Yeah.
Okay. Section.
I'm trying to see where that really.
Okay. Section 10. Section 10, see also item C and item F. I'm sorry, see also appendix C. In item four, remove the measurement. Item five is where I added minimum living area for single family. It's 1,200 square feet, multifamily is 500 square feet. Okay, these minimum living areas are dependent on the type of zoning district. So for example, in C3, it allows single family as well as multifamily in certain instances. And so that's why it's distinguished there. Okay? Section 11, see also appendix C, remove the dimension in item seven, add item eight, minimum living area, 500 square feet. Section 12. See also. See also appendix C, remove the dimension, minimum living area for dwelling uses 500 square feet. Section 13, same thing, see also appendix C, remove the dimension, minimum living area, 500 square feet. Section 14. Same thing, see also appendix C, remove the dimension in item three, add item four, minimum living area for dwelling units is 500 square feet. Section 15 in the conservation district. See also appendix C and item D, remove the dimension in item D3, add D4, minimum living area for dwelling units, 1,200 square feet. Section 16, same thing. See also appendix C, remove the dimension, add minimum living area of 500 square feet. In the PUD, same thing. Section 17, see also appendix C, remove the dimension, add minimum living area for 500 square feet. Section 18. See also appendix C in item F. Remove the dimension in item eight. And there is no living units allowed in that district. So and that's airport one, which is essentially the airport. So there is no residential use permitted in that zoning district. Now in section 14, this AP2. There are some living or employee quarters that are permitted in that zoning district, but it's the same changes. See also appendix C and item F, sir? Yes, sir. Because I numbered it wrong, that's why. Yep, it's a typo. Yep, that should be an X instead of a, it should be, it should be XIX and it's not XV. I'll change that. All right. 19, yes. All right, so those changes are the same as far as the see also appendix C, removing the dimension and adding 500 square foot minimum living area. And the next section is 15, but it should be XX and not XV. Same changes. Except there, there is no requirement for a perimeter poured footing. Minimum living area in this, in this zoning district is 1,200 square feet. Next section should be section 21 and. Should be section twenty one and not twenty six. Or sixteen, I'm, I'm gonna have to check all of those, those section numbers, boy.
So that's the reason Sunny's not here today, she finally messed up?
No, this was not her. This is all me. I'll take ownership of this one. Exactly. Curse of writing and all that other stuff. Um, alright, so the next section is downtown riverfront. Same change, see also appendix C. That's an item G, and then on the next page, item H was added for a minimum living area of twelve hundred square feet for single family dwelling units. And all can, and that one, we added the perimeter poured concrete footers because it wasn't in there. Next section should be section twenty two. X, it should be X X I I and not X B I I. Same changes, see also appendix C. And that is downtown business district. And that's where I did the relettering for item two. C and D, the item two C and D, the first one should be A and B and not C and D. Right, minimum living area for single family dwelling units is twelve hundred square feet. If there's any confusion about why there are minimum. Areas required for the various. Units dwelling units above that. It says for residential uses above the first floor for buildings fronting Saint John's Avenue, so if you're going to construct new units. Along Saint John's Avenue, it has to be above the first floor. And they have to conform to those aerial requirements for studios, one bedroom, two bedroom, et cetera, okay? And that's why I added only just the minimum living area for single family dwelling units of twelve hundred square feet in there, because if you were going, they are permitted, single falling family, single. Family dwelling units are permitted in the D B district. But if you're going to construct a new one, it has to be minimum twelve hundred square feet, okay? And I also added the perimeter. Concrete footer requirement there. Next section. Similar revisions, see also appendix C. And added minimum living area for dwelling units of five hundred square feet. And that's for P U Ds. Sir? But it wouldn't apply to those buildings if you're constructing on the second floor, because the building would be an existing building. Or, well, it could be a new one, but yeah. Right, so if you were to construct a new building, it would have to have that kind of footer. Make sense?
Yeah, you know. Everybody else. It's still.
And then they can go up multiple stories, but. Is it fair to assume that they can do commercial on. Residential upstairs?
Correct.
And that would qualify the residential upstairs?
Ms. Rose, would you match your microphone totally? Thank you.
If they're doing. A two-story with crush on the bottom residential upstairs, they would do a continuous footer. Based on.
Correct. Well, they wouldn't have to go back in and create a new footer, no.
How about we let her get through reading, the reading, and then we come back with the staff comments and just make your notes and come back and ask those questions, please.
Okay. So, let's see, where do we end up? Page nineteen? Or twenty? Okay.
Mine does too.
Section twenty one? That's the last one we did. So, the next section is for P I D, planned industrial development district. Again, see appendix C and item D. And then a minimum living area for dwelling units of five hundred square feet. And lastly. Development standards for P U D. Minimum living area for dwelling units is five hundred square feet and see also appendix C. So then appendix C should be in the back of your packet, it should be the chart that you have. And that's basically just a chart of summary of all the development standards that are listed in each. Zoning district. Is your last column the minimum living area?
No. We're only up to minimum yard front.
Okay. Okay, so this is, like I said, just a summary of all of the development standards for each zoning district. With lots of footnotes. Behind it.
So can, can we, can y'all print this out like a legal page or something?
You should have a copy of it in your email. But that's the chart right there. Can, can you not see that?
I'll put your glasses on.
Right.
Ms. Neely has stepped out to make copy, she'll be right back.
Okay. Thank you.
Nothing on this chart is new except for the last column, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question real quick? Prior to your changes, was there minimums before?
Or we? No ma'am, we just.
People come in and build whatever they wanted. Or?
We didn't have the authority to say no.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like, I'd like a paper with the end, just to.
Ms. Neely should be right back. Yes.
If it's adopted by the city commission, yes.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, are we open to comments from the board while we're waiting for the chart?
Um, I'd prefer to let Ms. Walsh get through with her reading and comment and then we'll comment.
I'm sorry, I thought we were, I apologize.
Yeah, I'm, sir, I'm pretty.
Okay, I thought you were gonna go do something on this.
No, the only thing I wanted to show you was the chart that was, that was actually had been created and. Last column is the newest, is the thing that we've added to everything for the minimum.
Anybody on the board have any? Objections to move it on to comment? Okay, then we'll move into the board comment section. Mr. Paul.
Mr. Chairman, my first question is, what is our objective to adding these regulations? You know, regulation for the sake of regulation. Is normally never recommended, so what is our purpose? Why are we tackling this at this moment?
Okay. We, we need a standard in the city. To. Decide what our community wants to look like. Do we want a community of mostly larger homes, or do we want a variety of? Sizes of houses so that different people can afford them? And have a choice as to where they want to live, maybe they don't want a big old house and they're, you know, they're my age and they're like, no, I'm downsizing and. I don't need a twenty-two hundred square foot house. But I would like an option to be able to rent or purchase a smaller one. So that I don't have as much work to do when I get off of work. Or after I retire.
Mr. Holmes?
Well, I think that originally the.
You're not retired yet.
The goal was. Originally to establish at least a minimum. Size of the homes. And quite frankly, it was prompted by. Comment at, at a city commission meeting recently where someone proposed to build some two hundred and twenty square foot homes. And. And there are lots in the city of Palaca which would allow someone to build a two hundred and twenty square foot home in the absence of. Some sort of regulation that prescribes some minimum size. Without the necessity of a PUD, tiny unit development or subdivision or anything of that nature because they're already existing. And so the question that arose was, do we really think that it'd be in the best interest of the city to, to have? Two hundred and twenty square foot homes placed on existing lots in the city? And if you think so, then obviously you can say you don't want to go forward with this, but. Staff felt obligated to bring something forward for the city commission's consideration that would. Afford at least a minimum and five hundred square foot, square feet would not seem to be. Onerous. Or me to design to get it probably would be higher than five hundred square feet, but um. You know, that, that was staff's position and I'm happy for staff to move forward with it, at least to the city commission level, but. Two hundred and twenty square feet is. Ten by twenty-two folks. And um, you know, you're putting a bedroom, bathroom, kitchen. Living area in two hundred and twenty square feet. I guess that's. Me either, but I guess that's one of those preference things.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm seeing minimum requirements of twelve hundred square feet for all single family. You know, and not until we get to multi-family apartment types do we drop to five hundred, so I mean.
Not apartments, though, I mean, right, I mean, I understood when we, our conversation was five hundred, you could build a house for five hundred, is that not accurate? You can build a house at five hundred square feet under those, under those regulations, as I understand them. And I've not reviewed them in detail, but in talking to Ms. Walsh, you can build a house at five hundred square feet under those regulations, it just can't be in the R one district.
Don't, don't get the mindset of efficiency apartment.
Why?
And that was gonna be, I mean, that was gonna be my question is, I mean, you know. Would this affect homes that are already built, they're putting like a mother-in-law cottage or something outside their own?
Absolutely.
I don't know if we allow mother-in-law cottages under the code, so I don't want to speak to that.
My experience is they have to be attached to the existing residence.
They accessory dwelling units are permitted in some zoning districts and not in others, right? So yes, it would apply to them as well.
That's what I, I've had people ask me questions about that, so.
But county has a, like a mother-in-law cottage, I think they have a maximum of how large it can be, and I think it's. I don't want to say, but I think it's eleven hundred square feet or something like that.
It's a percentage of the base unit, isn't it?
Yes, it has to be, if it's going to be an accessory unit, it has to be at least one square foot smaller than the primary use. I don't know if that's what our code, our county code says exactly, but that's been my experience in other places.
More, there's more to it than that. I believe there's more to it than that, I think there is a maximum of what you can have, if it's being built as a mother-in-law suite. Family suite and, you know, you're not doing a lot school or anything else, you're just asking for another dwelling unit, but. That's just kind of for reference anyway, the city does what the city. Wants and needs to do, and there's some differences in land size, lot size and all that good stuff when you talk about county, city, so. If you, you asked the, 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 I guess motivation, the motivation was just what I said. We looked at the lots in question and thought that putting up. Seven, eight, nine, two hundred and twenty square foot. Houses on those seven, eight, nine, ten lots. Just wasn't going to be the development that the city of Palaca needed, but your, your thoughts could be different, then ultimately the city commission will decide, but that's an honest answer to your question.
Thank you for that.
I do think that tiny homes in general are becoming more popular. And most of them actually do start out lower than five hundred, I think five hundred is a good, is a good place to start personally, but. I do think you might be surprised at how popular tiny homes are, especially among like younger people. It does tend to be something that I think we might see in the future. Just my two cents.
Mr. Paul.
For the sake of clarity, living area as reference is defined as heated and cooled, correct? Not under roof? So garages, porches.
My understanding.
Well, that makes a big difference. So currently, if I had to guess. Being in real estate. I, a third to a half of the homes in the city, especially south city limits, are going to be under twelve hundred square foot. And I'm reading single family residential. Minimum living area twelve hundred square foot for R one A A, R one A and R one. So, I'm reading that is, if I want to build a new home in Rolling Hills, it's gotta be twelve hundred square foot. Is that accurate?
Yes.
See, and when we price houses in construction, it's under roof, not heated and cooled. So you can have a thousand square foot house and have a front porch and a back porch. Equal two hundred square feet and there's your twelve hundred square foot house.
That, that was my question. Yep, so let's assume living area and we'll specify, but can we assume that it's heated and cooled? No, 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 for, for the rest of this discussion and, and will, is that a fair definition for everybody?
It says here, minimum living area. Living area.
That's, that's a term that, that she, she pulled up, so we just needed to find. Moving forward in our conversation, are we, do we want living area to mean under roof or to mean heated and cooled?
Heated and cooled.
Okay, I agree. I, I know that there are. Dozens upon dozens, upon dozens, maybe hundreds of homes that are very efficient in our city limits. That are well below twelve hundred square foot. You know, three-bedroom, one-bath homes meet the needs of a lot of families in our community and they're. My first one was on Wells Avenue, it was nine hundred and eighty something square feet. So I, I, I think if nothing else, this number. Might need to be adjusted, but. I'm, I'm just. I guess I'm trying to figure out. Are, are we, okay, so our objective is to curve, eliminate our two hundred square foot homes. The, the other half of me, the devil's advocate, says, is there a market for two hundred square foot homes in our community? And if so, is it right for us to strike that market? If, if the developer wants to invest in two hundred square foot homes, it's kind of his risk to do so, wouldn't, wouldn't. Wouldn't, wouldn't we think in, in the general market, free market?
See, and my objection to that is, is you go buy a house for two-hundred-and-fifty square feet and the existing properties are there. The assessment value on that is going to completely, you're going to have a lot that you sell for a couple thousand. You build a house and it's going to be two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. What is the market value of that house?
More than the vacant lot.
They're going to get, you're going to get your tax. What are you going to get? There's people that are moving here. It's not like Florida collects income taxes. It's property taxes.
If they meet code, they're not substandard, but are we going to create substandard areas where we got lighted slums?
There's going to be no, no tax collected on those. Wouldn't you think they're going to turn up empty?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you got, if you got a five-hundred or, or, you know, I
The tiny, yeah, they are popular, especially among, yeah, yeah.
Low tax base. Shouldn't our concern be in, avoid our tax base?
I'm a demo lawyer, not a planner, but, um, I'm just visioning the long-term consequence of a two-hundred-and-twenty square foot house, not two-fifty, ten, ten by twenty-two house that you put bathroom, a bedroom, a kitchen, a living area in. I don't know where you put closets or you know, the room for the HVAC or any of that, but
Minimum square footage of a bedroom is ten by ten.
That's a hundred. So that leaves you a hundred-and-twenty square feet for everything else that you got there. Now, is it better than a tent for somebody who can't, who can't, who's living homeless? I guess it would be. But from the perspective of the development of your community, is that the way you want your planning to, to advance? Uh, I guess everyone, everyone is free to have their own thought about that. Looking at the veterans housing, which Ms. Walsh looked at, I guess their minimum size is five-fifteen, uh, and that goes up to like a thousand or eleven-hundred.
The second house that, that you saw, the smaller, just the foundation, that was nine-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet.
Which they came before us.
And, and there are many people who feel that that's kind of like the low, that's, that's the threshold. That's the low end of the, of the, of the equation. But, I mean, to your point, if a builder builds it, and we just had that conversation today, and I hadn't thought too much about it, but you probably know. We were told by a builder today that, or Ms. Walsh was told by a builder today, and she related to me was that it really isn't even economically feasible for a builder to build a two-hundred-and-twenty square foot house because you've got the bathroom costs involved, you got the HVAC costs involved, you got the kitchen costs involved. All of that's already there. So the, the space that you're cutting out
The cheapest thing to build.
Is the cheapest thing to build, right? So, you know, if you, if somebody does build them, you have to wonder about what the motivation is because the economic factor wouldn't seem to be there.
If
How you build a profit? I don't know how you build a profit margin into that house, is what I'm saying, and sell it. I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I mean, to Ms. Owen's point, there are people who I won't even tell you that I could get by with that because I guess our generation liked to accumulate junk. And, uh, it's my junk. It's, I like the junk, but could I, could I get it in a five-hundred square foot house? No, not ever for me. So, uh, I don't know how that's going to work out as times, as times go forward. But I do know that if you, from my perspective, if, if I were working at this from planning perspective, I think you'd almost have to create subdivisions or PUD type arrangements where that scenario could be present and provide for amenities, commons areas, and things of that nature. That would, that would make it something that, you know, at least you could, I could rationalize as being a development that could serve a purpose. I just can't see a two-hundred-and-twenty, that's me personally, I know I said, I allot, and I'm not in charge of this operation.
Well, everything, everything that we're talking about here, and then correct me if I'm wrong. Y'all, y'all, the, the, Ms. Thomas and Ms. Walsh, Mr. Holmes. If we did this and you put a minimum living area of twelve-hundred square foot, which you're saying, you know, we're going against the people's rights and things like that, freedoms. All of that can be put in place. And then, in fact, if somebody wants to do a subdivision or something like that with the many homes, they could just come back to us and seek a variance like everybody else said, no?
Please, unless you build a variance procedure into the code. So you can't just vary any ordinance, regulation that's in place. So unless there's a provision for the variance in the ordinance, you know, variance in order for it to be something other than arbitrary and capricious has to provide a standard by which the variance can be granted. You know, what criteria do I meet to be given a variance? It isn't just at the whim of whatever the body is that's considering the request. So, you know, if, if, and I think what Ms. Walsh did was the twelve-hundred was only in R-one, right?
No, it's throughout other districts.
Okay, then, then in those districts. So if you, if you wanted to say that that was too much, and, and then I, I heard what Mr. Barnes said, and maybe he's right. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not criticizing anybody's opinion whatsoever here. But if you said that, we think twelve-hundred's a bit too high for a minimum, okay? And what, you, you're free to set it, set it up. And then the commission can also look at it and see where they go with it. But, but our thought was, if the commission and the city commission decide that this is not necessary, so be it. What we didn't want to have happen from staff's perspective was, see one of these permits start coming in, applications start coming in. And when people see the two-hundred-and-twenty square foot houses being built next to them, and they ask, how are you letting this happen? What's this going to do to our tax, our, our value of our property? To have a two-hundred-and-twenty square foot house next to us? And we say, or the commissioner calls me and says, Don, how'd you let this happen? And I say, yeah, we just never get around to getting an ordinance passed that would have given you any control. That's what I don't want to have happen. I don't want it to be on staff. If you and the commission think it's fine, then so be it. That's, that's, that's what you guys are, that's what you're here to advise about, and that's what they're here to, to voice their opinion about. But we didn't want, I didn't want staff to be called in a position where we didn't give you an opportunity to make that decision before the first permit started, application started coming in.
And I agree with you. I mean, I, I think that, that, you know, if, if you've got, let's just call it a subdivision, you know, if you got a subdivision already started, man, and, and it's in, in, you start, somebody comes in, just what you said a minute ago, Ms. Rawls, about the smaller, um, tiny home coming in next to a bigger home and what's stopping it to happen? I think that we need to have some kind of, of minimum in, in, in place, but I mean, you know, when you, um, River Groves, over in East Black, I know that's not in Palaca, but you have some nicer houses down along the river. You know, and then the, the, uh, smaller houses were put out by the road or about, you know, to the beginning of the subdivision coming in. You know, somewhere along the line, you've, you've got to think about the, the, the people that are building the houses and purchasing houses and things like that. I mean, what, what are you allowing? Somebody come in, you know, have, have a, a lot, and then they got, again, you go to, let's go to fairways.
You're creating something that nobody wants. Nobody wants the smallest house in the neighborhood. Nobody wants the biggest house.
Mister Board?
Can, can I comment? On, on the record, I'm not necessarily in favor of small houses, but you said you're creating something that nobody wants. Well, if that's the case, then it'll never be created.
So what happens then? It's built, and then what happens to it?
They don't want one mixed in with a bunch of contrary.
Yeah, create a, 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 a PUD, create a, a, a unit development to where in this location in Putnam County, in the city, wherever, that you have these small houses. But you're in your PUD, you're going to have a community barbecue area. You're going to have a cabana. You're going to have a pool. You're going to have all these other amenities that your little tiny house doesn't have.
Now, some subdivisions that we all know have need restrictions. But let's just imagine, uh, Crystal Cove and vacant lot out there. And somebody pops a two-hundred-and-twenty square foot house down there and comes to the city and says, y'all let this happen?
We've already put a trailer park there.
That small, there is a small house over there. You have, you know, multimillion dollar houses on the river, and then you got this little small house. It's a twelve-hundred square foot, right when you pull in. There was a lot there.
I think it would be rare to see just one tiny house. I think, I think what'll end up happening
Hang on, Mister Walsh.
I, I think it would be just rare to see just one. I think we would end up seeing the tiny home communities in general are what I think is, what's really popular, where they essentially build like a whole thing around it. So I think that's a great idea in terms of setting up something for that, rather than maybe making it to where we would have one small house, one large house, maybe one small house, or a bunch of variants. Yeah, that's my opinion.
I did such a hard time. I'm telling you. Go back to your office.
Trying to add more tax base into the city. And I know what, like Chase was saying, some of these older homes in Palaca, it was the times, it's what, you know, there were three ones. And they were from nine-hundred and some, you know, on up. It's, it's just how it was. And then, you know, everybody got bigger and bigger. But yes, not everybody can afford two-thousand square feet. But I'm not, I don't know where we got it set at, but we've got to keep our tax base. Because I think where it's at, where it can hurt us, it's not necessarily in the fairways, because they probably have stuff in place. But it's just going to be like these little lots. So how, how many square feet are the houses right there at the end to us and all the safe jobs? Did that girl put up the two?
If I had to guess, like ten-fifty or something, but I'm guessing.
They're about a thousand to eleven-hundred. Yeah, you, you really don't because you leave no room for garages.
They're going to get swiped in, so let's just pretend, even though rolling hills has, it rolls. You know, that somebody's coming in with this. We need, we need habitat, we need growth.
And sometimes you may want to put, if we have a, a lot that's non-conforming, maybe the city will take it back and put a community park. Or maybe they do, you know, I don't know. There's a lot of things that could be done. This guy right here that owns this house right here, how happy do you think he is living by himself in five-hundred square feet? How much company does he have come over? I, I know, even our veterans, we thought enough of them to build up a five-hundred square foot, one bedroom. I mean, A minimum of nine-hundred square feet for that veteran. fought for our country, living in a five-hundred square foot. That's my opinion. I think we need to have a minimum, and I, I think twelve-hundred is, is perfectly fine. I just don't see it going families and resale value, you know?
You've got something as big as this table here.
I mean, I'm living in less than eleven-hundred and just me. Yeah.
Twelve is, you know, that's everywhere you go, you see twelve-hundred square feet. You know, and you got a certain sized lot, which I noticed we were seventy-five by a hundred, you can't, you know, that's got to be a big lot. You see that everywhere.
Miss, I'm going to, the, the pleasure of the board, I'm going to let Ms. Kitchens, she's asked to speak, if that's okay?
Please.
Give us your name and address, please.
Legal Kitchen's ten-twenty-seven South Swole Street, Palaca, Florida. I think we definitely need a minimum building standard. When I heard the presentation or the comment at city commission that this fellow wanted to build supposedly, an eighty-two-year-old lady had come to this fellow and asked him to build her a house, and he was going to do a two-hundred-and-twenty foot square house for her. Folks, I drive a station wagon, a ninety-five Chevrolet Caprice. It's eight by twenty, that's a hundred-and-sixty square feet. Attach a small Volkswagen behind it, and you got, probably got two-hundred-and-twenty square feet. You want to live in a station wagon?
That's a battleship you drive.
Same thing. But the point is, give you the, give you the size, that's ridiculous. Well, you must set minimum standards. I would like to see the minimum a little bit higher. However, the minimum of five-hundred doesn't hurt the veterans. Habitat for Humanity built those homes. It's what the veterans needed and wanted. Five-hundred's a minimum. They could have built it at twelve-hundred, fifteen-hundred, fifty thousand. It was just the, if we set the minimum, it can't go below that. And as for what the market, there is, yes, there's a market here and there for tiny homes. I've watched the AG TV's show Tiny Homes. I think they're adorable. I wouldn't mind having one in my backyard so that I could use my house as storage. But because like, like Mister Holmes said, you know, we have, several of us have quite a bit of accumulation. There's no way I could live in two-hundred-and-twenty square feet. I'd rather live in my station wagon. At least I can move it. But I think you, you must set a minimum square foot limit. You have developers coming in that don't give a flip about the city of Palaca. They just want to make money and haul buggy out of here. Without development standards, without building standards, you're open to anything that comes down the tubes. And if somebody wants a small house, like I think Ms. Rawls said, get a PUD. And it doesn't even have to be in the city of Palaca. I personally don't want to see ten or twenty small tiny homes across the street from my house where a certain developers bought a tax deed on some undeveloped property. And I think it, I think that, that runs down the value of your property. I would not buy a, a regular-sized house in a tiny house neighborhood. Set the minimum standard. If you don't like five-hundred, set it higher. The things that are already built are going to be grandfathered in. You're not going to go in and make people tear down their apartment buildings or their houses. But set a minimum standard. Let's get some rules and guidelines here to stop the city of Palaca from being ravaged, shall we say, by unscrupulous developers that want to just make money, get PR, and haul buggy out of here. And note, I cleaned up my conversation. Pass the darn thing. There's nothing wrong with it. Minimum square footage is twelve-hundred. I, I got no problem with that. And, and the other zoning, my zonings are one, A. I'm fine with a minimum building, uh, dimension of twelve-hundred square feet. My house is right at twelve-hundred square feet. I could use twenty-four-hundred square feet. But it is what it is. So, I mean, don't, you've got to set a minimum standard. You want to set higher than five-hundred, then I'd say set it higher than five-hundred. But for God's sakes, don't go below five-hundred. I mean, the old outhouses were probably two-hundred-and-twenty square feet. Why in the world would you want to let people build two-hundred-and-twenty foot, square foot houses in the city of Palaca? Seriously, don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Kitchens. So so, um, with this particular, uh, we have to have another meeting on this, do we not? Or do we?
You don't have to have another meeting. This can go to the commission.
Okay, I thought I was wondering, I mean, I didn't know, when you and I talked about it, I thought I heard you say we had to have two meetings for this. So
We have to have two, a minimum of two public hearings. So this is what, when we will actually have three. So this is number one, and then two commission hearings.
Okay. So what we, what we actually need to do is push this on to a motion before the board. I mean, to accept, yes, or hang on just a minute?
Yes.
I want to make sure my mind's clear here. To accept what we've got before us. Is that right, Miss Thomas?
Make a motion, I'm sorry. I forgot to turn on my microphone. Make a motion that you accept the proposed ordinance, yes.
Okay.
To, to the commission, yes. I just, I just had one comment. Is that, uh, Mister Wallace had a question on page fourteen. Some, um, number line thirty-two, the small package. And you wanted to know about, um, you said all construction should be on continuous perimeter four concrete footers. And he was saying that, what about the ones that are already existing if they want to do housing on the second floor? So, you know, uh, are you talking about new construction for?
Well, if it, if it goes on the second floor as, as residential.
True.
It just, it just needs to be defined. Don't, don't leave any, you know, when I used to write descriptions of property, you never left, sometimes you got so redundant, repeat stuff, but you never left it in bounds as to what you meant.
Right. And so I just wanted to bring that up. That's something that the board wants to consider about that one, as well as the definition of living area, then those should be added to the part of the motion to be, um, to amend this document with those corrections.
Okay. Mister Board?
May I add also clarity? Uh, it, it's my understanding, my home on Wells Avenue, nine-hundred-and-eighty square foot, if it burned all but, you know, a, a portion of one wall, um, moving forward to rebuild it, it's considered new construction. Therefore, at that time, I'd have to adhere to new codes. So, you know, our previous speaker mentioned all homes currently exist and are grandfathered in. That's not the case. You know, if, if there is, and I don't know the, the cutoff for said repair, but if there's significant repair Um, you know, if, if there is, and I don't know the, the cutoff for said repair, but if there's significant repairs that need to be done to a home, um, it, it then becomes new construction, um, even though it's a pre-existing foundation, so to speak. Um, so, uh, that would make it have to conform to the new standards.
Do we have language?
You, you can, you can add language to tell them.
Uh, yeah.
Existing home being burned, flooded, washed away.
Would that be called it? Not, not a natural disaster, but
I, I
Just anything.
Anything, yeah. Cause if you're building, yeah, if you're building light for light from existing,
You should be able
You should be able to put it back on the footprint.
In our, in our code, there's a percentage of destruction.
Yeah.
If it has
It's over fifty-one percent.
That's, that's, that's threshold.
You have to bring it back up to a hundred percent code, so if the back end of your house burns, you know, and it caught more than half the house, and you're doing more than fifty-one percent, if you're rewiring the house more than fifty-one percent, or you're reploning it, that has to be back, brought back up to current code. You can't just continue from knob and tube and then start adding, you know, new electrical, you have to bring it all, a hundred percent of the house has to be brought up to code. So you're not gonna, I don't know.
Last, last comment, and then I will rest my case. One, I'm a little, I guess, concerned is the best word. I don't like the perception, um, of this. You know, we, we called a special planning meeting to discuss this. This is a big change to our code. Um, and, and I don't like the perception that it brings calling a special meeting versus, you know, our normally stated meeting, uh, whi- which could have taken place in two weeks from now. In addition, I'm gonna fall back on my previous statement. Twelve hundred square foot, I think, is excessive. I'm not opposed to minimum square footage, just I don't necessarily wanna see tiny homes. You know, but I'm not for the sake of regulation, just for regulation. And I, I think y'all would be amazed at how many homes are very efficient in our community that are significantly less than twelve hundred square feet. Um, and the difference between a thousand square foot home right now and a twelve hundred square foot home that, at a hundred and fiftieth square foot is what? Fifty grand? Um, and, and that could make the difference in somebody's budget. Um, so I, I think twelve hundred square foot is excessive. I don't necessarily have a complaint with five hundred square foot, um, but that is my last comment, and I will hush it.
Anybody else have any further comment? Okay. I will ask for a motion to accept the, um, staff's recommendations. Is that correct, or is, is?
And if you wanna add those amendments that, um, talked about the definitions?
I'll make a motion to accept the staff's proposal with the following changes of living square footage be changed to heated square feet. Um, any type of natural disaster to a current home that is less than the square footage, it would be on a case-by-case basis for them to come in and permit that if it was a disaster and they had to rebuild, and their insurance company only gave them a certain amount for a certain square footage. Um,
I think we already have that
existing footprint of a house.
We have that in our code under, we, and I don't know what the exact percentage is, but, okay.
When you're saying, you don't wanna, you just wanna say disaster, or I feel like you would just wanna say disaster, not natural?
Yeah. And I think in the code, it says any, any instance, whether it's fire, flood, whatever.
Um, so basically, the motion would be changing the minimum living to heated. And what was that, that Earl had suggested?
Defining the applicability of the footers to new or existing construction.
Yeah, making that definition more clear about footers.
All right.
And this is in the downtown business, right, district?
Yeah.
Yeah, downtown business and downtown, and downtown, downtown riverfront, right.
We worked long and hard to get residential, because there were some others that thought that the, kick the fence to get downtown and coming back.
And it would be. And it would be.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, it was hard to get, you wouldn't believe what it was.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have to have a second to have discussion.
Did, did we, did we, one of you change, was it the minimum square footage?
The, I accepted the minimum square footage that was listed here. Of twelve hundred for R1, five hundred for R2, listed here. I accepted the minimum square footage, and then making the change from square footage to, instead of living, make sure it was heated. And then the footer notes.
And
That's my motion.
If we missed any, I, can you throw something catch-all in there to clean up some of these definitions that, you know, where, where we need to?
Florida building code is gonna catch everything else.
Okay, we have, we have a motion. We have to have a second, have discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, accepting the, uh, code as the staff has given to us with the amendments that are put to it. Any discuss? Mr. Barnes?
I, I think our, uh, definition of disaster is very vague and unclear and important, um, as recommended. And, uh, yeah, we'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Why can't you build back up? You should be able to
Well, that's what, that's what we're trying to say here, and she, and Ms. Walsh says it, that that is in our existing code.
Yes, it is.
Already.
It's not something that we're, we're talking about.
All we're talking about here is the square footage of minimums of square footages. Yes, sir, Mr. Moore?
But our current code states that if an existing structure is damaged beyond fifty-one percent, it has to be built back to current standards. Current standards being upgraded, electrical standards, plumbing standards, this being a new upgraded standard. So it would also apply. Um, so I, I'm, I'm unclear with a vague definition of how y'all want to undo that.
I, I don't think y'all can do that. If, you know, if, if you undo that, they're saying our standards mean nothing, that they're just hanging out there for fun. You know, we got, we got electrical standards, we got plumbing standards. Every time you turn around, there's a new standard, Dawn knows. Uh, there's a new standard being tapped in there, but they're the good, for the good of the people who are gonna live in these houses or, or dwell. So having it come back to current standards, to me, is not bad. We need to be able to let you rebuild your nine hundred foot square house to current standards. You see what I mean? The standards are not the thing, it's the footprint.
See, yeah.
But the, the, this, this ordinance makes the footprint a standard. So we, we need to figure out how to better define. I- if it's the board's, if, if it's the board's opinion that you need to bulldoze it and, and build a new one, then, then that just needs to be defined. Um, I, I think we're just, we're vague at the moment.
Ms. Owens?
If we pass this, and I have a million square foot home, and there's a total loss, because it's more than fifty-one percent, I would be required to then build a twelve hundred square foot home. And I don't necessarily know, is, is that correct?
Yes.
And I understand that. Like to speak, wanting all of that, there's reason, that's but if I was the homeowner, I would certainly, you know, and if I had, had that happen, if it was obviously a priority or something like that, then what? You know, and I don't know how to decide in terms of insurance, but if I lose the nine hundred square foot home and I can't put a twelve hundred square foot home that I feel for whatever reason I don't want to, then I would necessarily have to move, right? Or focus somewhere else, and how, how do we work that out?
Or you could dump another, right?
Do it to twelve hundred.
Right.
But we won't be able to allow the homeowner to build the same square footage that just burned down.
Back, back to the same square footage footprint however you want.
But everything else has to be done.
It, it comes back to what we're talking about. Bring up a point that we technically kind of are, if they do lose their which I get the possibility that it is now, but I do understand it, but also I do also understand the perspective of, well, I lost my nine hundred square foot home, I want that back to code with everything else, but
Miss?
See, I, I would like to see us put twelve hundred square feet with a minimum, but also allow you to come back for your nine hundred square feet if that's what you've got.
Well, amend the motion that way. I said, can we amend the motion that way, Ms. Thomas?
No, we have, we're talking about two different ordinances now. We're talking about in this ordinance, minimum square footage. You're talking about
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
At this reflection, this is after thinking about this, we essentially then would have to change the whole other thing, and I don't think that's possible, right?
Not at this moment, not at this moment.
Not, 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 not with this document.
And I
What we're gonna do is put this down and
It's not in this ordinance. Let her finish, she was just saying, let her finish what she was saying.
In this proposed ordinance, it is, um, establishing minimum, um, square footage for, um, new housing, new construction to come in. What you're talking about with the destruction of an existing house, um, that's greater than fifty-one percent, and then you rebuild it back to, um, existing standards. Well, that would affect that. You need to go back and amend that ordinance.
Okay.
Wouldn't have to do with destruction and the reconstruction.
Okay.
This is strictly new construction, not, not
Okay, let's deal, let's deal with, let's, let's deal with the
That matter is not before
Right, let's deal with the motion we have on the floor.
So the fifty-one percent was required to
Completely different part.
That would be in the different ordinance back.
Right.
It would not be considered new construction.
It would be, it would be considered new construction at that point, but we're not dealing with that. We're dealing with this ordinance now. And we cannot, we cannot change what Ms. Thomas is saying. We can't change the other ordinance. We can deal with what we got on the board here, and then later on, come back to that venue, or that's what you wanna call it, and, 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 you know, you know, um, come back to that, and, you know, how that works. Right now, we're dealing with this.
And just as, on the side of this, as Ms. Walsh said earlier, there are three public, um, hearings on this. The one you're having today, two before the county commission, I mean, the city commission, I've heard of the county for a long time, sorry. Um, so, and two before the city commission. At that point, during one of the city commission meetings, you can bring forth this idea of changing, amending, um, the ordinance with the reconstruction of a, of a destroyed home, where, you know, you're rebuilding it to make carve out that exception. And that's something you can bring before the commission at that time, the commission can direct Ms. Walsh to, um, amend that ordinance, and then that would be brought forward. And then this would, entire matter would be resolved.
Right.
So, yes, Mr. Barnes?
I, I hear what Ms. Thomas is saying, and you're, you are completely correct, but isn't it proper to present the best finished product to the commission, um, and instead of leaving a lot of things hanging and saying, yep, we stamp it, and then go try to fix it later?
But you cannot fix it.
She's saying you can't fix that. We, we can't do that other ordinance.
You cannot fix it in this ordinance.
I, I agree. That, that's one of my objections to this ordinance.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But we have to deal with this order.
I understand.
So what I'm gonna ask at this point, we've come to a standstill. What I'm gonna ask at this point, we have a motion and we have a second.
No, it's at twelve hundred for half, five hundred for the other half.
Right.
And a one random eight fifty, I think.
Okay. But what I'm gonna ask at this point, because we can, we're, we're, what you're bringing up is a mute point, because we can't do anything else. With the other order, okay? So right now, we have a motion and a second before us. Is there any other comments?
One.
Is it to set?
As presented.
As presented.
As presented, with the exception of, go ahead and say it.
The exception of the living square footage be renamed to heating square foot.
Heating and air.
He, heating air.
Air's not required.
Required.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
And the footer for the downtown district to be more specific for second floor residential. Is that, was that not?
That's not how you worded it a minute ago.
The, the footer would be rewarded.
Did you take that down, or are you just recording everything?
Clarifying.
Okay. Okay.
What I, what I have is to keep the minimum living area, but then add a definition for living area that would include the heated space. Right?
Right.
And then define the applicability of new and existing construction regarding the footers.
Right.
In the downtown business and the downtown riverfront districts.
Right.
That sound right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that answer your question, Mr. Walsh? Okay. Ms. Barnes, you got something else to say over there?
I just wanted to remind everybody that a lot of the new construction in the city right now is less than twelve hundred square foot. It's between ten fifty and eleven fifty, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Was four, all those opposed?
Aye.
Five to one, it passes. Let's move on. Okay, we're at the point that, uh, we're gonna adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?